So we have a lot of stuff to cover this evening, so we're going to stay on topic and hopefully get it accomplished. I'm going to warn everybody, I've had no sleep. Just send that out there. So we should be just fine. Thank you. All right, Cal, you're up.
Notice of a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of Phil- Town of Phillips Town on January 10th, 2024 at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, 238 Main Street in Cold Spring, New York. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments for or against a proposed local law entitled, "A Local Law Amended the Town Code of the Town of Phillips Town by Repealing Article 6 Entitled Exemptions for Qualified Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers" of Chapter 156, entitled Taxation, and reenacting the same as the new Article 6 entitled Volunteer Firefighters and Volunteer Ambulance Workers, Workers' Real Property Tax Exemption is of Compliance with the 2022 amended to the New York State Real Property Tax Law 466-A. A complete copy of the local law is available for inspection upon request sent to the Town Clerk at PhillipsTown.com and is also available on the Town's website, PhillipsTown.com, dated January 3rd, 2024 by order of the Town Board. Tara K. Percocello, Town Clerk.
Okay, because of my affiliation with the emergency services, I am going to turn the floor over to Judy to take care of opening the public hearing and handling any of the discussion.
Good evening and welcome. For anyone who would like to comment on the public law that's proposed, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Let everybody want.
I guess there's no questions?
If there are no comments, do you have a comment? Sure.
Hi, my name is Jay Brenner and I'm part of the Garrison Fire Department. And the, one of the reasons why we desperately need this is because we're having enormous problems getting new volunteers. So this is just a wonderful thing that the governor has passed down and we really hope that you guys can see what our needs are for all four of the fire departments here in Phillips Town.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on the proposed law? Can I, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Judy. All right, Cal.
Notice of a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Phillips Town on January 10th, 2024 at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, 238 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments for or against a proposed local law entitled, "A Local Law to Repeal Town Code Section 175-61.2 Entitled Garrison Golf Club Plan Development District," and reenact it as a new code, Section 175-61.2, entitled Garrison Cultural Conservation Plan Development District. A complete copy of the local law is available for inspection upon request sent to the Town Clerk at PhillipsTown.com and also available on the Town's website, PhillipsTown.com, dated January 3rd, 2024 by the order of the Town Board. Tara K. Percocello, Town Clerk.
So we did go through this law extensively, the change, the zoning change. There were a few suggested changes by the Town Board, which if you guys look through, you can see those changes have been made. I would like the representative to just make a brief presentation to the changes and anything else you'd like to speak.
Sure. I'm Adam Stalero from the law firm Cy Paget and Rizell. I'm the Project Counsel for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and Garrison Properties. So before the public hearing, I just wanted to thank the Town Board, staff, and the members of the other volunteer boards that have been reviewing this project thoroughly over the last few years. The public input has been very important to shaping this project, and the project has been improved through the process. So we're looking forward to receiving additional comments this evening and to working with the boards to continue to push this project forward. Just very briefly, in terms of what's being proposed in the zoning amendment, under the proposed amendment, the Garrison Golf Course property would remain as a planned development district as it is currently. The size of the planned development district would be reduced, and the zoning amendment would change the allowed uses and zoning requirements in the PDD to remove the authorization for some of the golf course elements and to add the theater elements that would support the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. The changes that were proposed at the last meeting, I don't have a copy of the, of the changes in front of me, but they were to specifically recognize the, that the property has been used by members of the public for visiting, using trails on the property, picnicking, and things like that, and we wanted to specifically call out that Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival wants those uses to continue under the amended zoning.
Okay. Anybody up from the board who'd like to speak? You saw the changes, it seems like they're up to what we had asked.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. If anybody'd like to speak, you'd come up to the mic, state your name, and have at Somebody's got to go first.
Nat.
Nat'll go, that'll work.
It's in the good seat.
Thanks, Nat.
Well, gosh, happy new year to you all. I haven't seen you in a month. Sorry about that. I should, by the record, my name is Nat Prentice. I live at 848 Route 9D. And I should say in the name of full disclosure that I am, in fact, and have served for 20 years as a director of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, so you've just got to take that into consideration. But speaking as an individual, I think this is, I've always felt this is a good project. I think it proposes a permanent solution for a very critical part of our town, and I think it's an employer, and we don't have a lot of employers that can provide that kind of employment opportunity. So I would hope that you would consider this the next step in the process and move it along. I mean, there's plenty yet to do, but I think I very much support your making the change to the zoning law.
You should sit a little closer. You should sit on this side.
Is there a review of what the zoning change means? From some, from some of the stuff I've been reading, it means that they have carte blanche to do almost anything, anytime, anywhere. And we, and I live across the street from the Garrison, and we've been very concerned about sound and light pollution and wildlife pollution, and they've set certain things in the planning board where it'll be reviewed for five to seven years or something like that. But from what I've been reading, it gives them carte blanche to do anything, and like, it's the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Society, and next year's plays have nothing to do with Shakespeare. So I, you know, speaking for my neighbors, we're very concerned that this could turn into a circus. So how is this going to be controlled if you break the zoning laws and change them?
Well, it has been reviewed extensively. It's been before the planning board, Bobby, for...
Good three, around three years now.
Three years. There's, there's a sound study available, there is traffic studies available, we have reviewed them, they have been operating there on a temporary permit for, is this third season, two seas- two seasons?
Two seasons so far.
Two seasons, we'll be going into the third season. We, we have had limited complaints, I'll put it that way. When we do get a complaint, we address it, and it's usually taken care of to the point that we don't get a repeat on the complaints.
Is this the only public hearing that will be available?
No, no, there has been, how many public hearings, Steve?
Will there be any more?
Well, there was the hearing on the DEIS, there's going to be a hearing on site plan before the planning board, assuming that the board grants the requested zoning amendment. So this is the next to last. Next to last of the...
So other than a walkthrough, this is the last of the meetings?
This is the last public hearing on this. Well, I, first of all, I plan on keeping the public hearing open until our February meeting. We need to do that to meet law before. County planning has not had time in our planning board.
They've actually, we just got it.
We didn't. But Tara said there was a 30-day window that we're not meeting with...
That's the planning board.
The planning board. So we can wait till the February meeting?
We're going to, we, the board should wait to hear from the planning board on this, but you did hear from county planning. They had no comments.
So, so we, the neighbors have a little bit more time to put together our thoughts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Terrific, thank you.
And we've also received some letters and correspondence from people who could not be here.
Right, support and in opposition.
Jay, if you'd like to see, these are the, because this is just looking at the zoning modification, this is the permitted uses that would be under the new zoning. I mean, yeah, you can take that. And, and clearly, John, right, this is just a decision about the zoning modification, the site plan still just remains the purview of the planning board.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm Martha.
I'm Martha Upton. I am Climate Smart Coordinator for Phillips Town. My comments are very brief. To me, from an environmental perspective, transitioning a golf course into a theater arts center is a huge win for the community. The massive quantities of chemicals, fertilizers, pesticides, and weed killers required to maintain a typical golf course are profoundly damaging to the earth, the water, and the natural world. The chemicals not only sink into the groundwater, but rain eventually washes them into our rivers and streams. By comparison, HVSF has already shown itself to be committed to environmentally friendly stewardship of this extraordinary piece of land. Their plans to restore native meadows, replant trees to offset those that are removed, and their environmentally conscious construction design are all proof of this ethos. HVSF is also setting a climate smart example for local nonprofits and businesses by recycling food scraps and installing EV car chargers, among any, many other things. From an, from an environmental point of view, this transition is and will be a great benefit to the town.
Thank you. Come on up. How are you, Madeline?
Hi. Here. Say hello, you're up. Madeline Ray, Garrison, New York, obviously, how are you all? I read the zoning board application, and I'd just like to highlight three things about the application. The 20-year building permit, the exemption to the light and sound, and just the scope of the permit, or the application, I should say. A 20-year building permit, that, that's, that's a very wide line. Just picture a child going to kindergarten the day construction starts. That construction doesn't end till that child graduates college. And that's a long stretch of time, especially when the law is three years of building with a one-year exemption. So I'm thinking perhaps that could be scaled down just a little bit, because that's a big ask to maybe, you know, five years with a two-year extension, something that's livable and, and more manageable for the neighbors of this proposed site. The exemption of the sound and light, as I read it within the special events, they say, "Go to the town, fill out the form, parade," you know, we all know the special event form now. But then they say, "However, when it comes to sound and light, we want an exemption because that special event may require more sound, louder sound, and, and more light, and we want to have that permission to, to get that." And, I mean, the exemptions they want or the things they ask are, are pretty astounding when they say, "We want shuttle buses, more parking. These events are going to be so big that we might require additional sanitation." Who's going to be the lucky neighbor that gets a bank of porta-potties next to their property where they have to hear porta-potties slapping shut all day and smell it all night? There, there needs to be a limitation or a cap or some sort of guideline to the number of people that are allowed at these special events, and, and no exemption to light and sound. They made it perfectly clear in the planning board meetings that they would follow the rule of law of sound and light, and that was a big deal to the neighbors to not have to hear it and see it on their long summer nights. They said they would, so no exemptions should be given to sound and light especially. And that kind of brings up to the scope of this project. We were told it's Shakespeare, 35 years, there's a tent in Basque Bell, nothing to see here, we've got 35 years of a tent and garrison, and the next thing we know, they're stewards of the land and they're taking an unobstructive view of the, of the Hudson, and they're going to build a permanent 500-seat theater and dozens and dozens of other buildings. There needs to be, the town needs to be careful, and it needs to have greater control, greater clarity, and a defined set of, of limitations to what goes on in this development. We, we were told it was Shakespeare, and now in 2024, no Shakespeare is on the schedule. So it's not a Shakespeare festival anymore. Shakespeare doesn't even, it's not even a word that appears on their application. It's, it's the Garrison Entertainment Complex, you know, no Shakespeare is mentioned. So they told us it was Shakespeare, and it's not Shakespeare. And to give them the freedom to do whatever they want, whenever they want, disregarding our laws, kind of shows that there will be a set of laws for this entertainment complex and a set of laws for everybody else.
I don't mean to interrupt, but the special use permit does have to be approved by the Town Board, just like the one that they currently operate under. There is, we reviewed, the noise, we reviewed, the traffic, we reviewed limitation of parking, limitation of seating. So there is a review for a special use permit. It's not, you know, you can have 10,000 people there for an event. As you well know, with the event that nearly happened at Graymore...
The Pirate Fair.
Right. Which the special use permit prevented that from happening. So because it was too big, it was going to be too loud, and that was, we were able, through the laws of the town and through the special use permit, stop that from happening. And if we feel that an event that would require a special use permit were happening at that facility that exceeded what was comfortable for us, it would also be prevented. Or limited or altered.
Okay, that's good to know, because sound and light is a big thing. These people work hard all week, and they want their weekends and their long summer nights to look at the sky and not hear anything and, and have these, their properties to themselves. And sound and light is a big deal, and there should just be no exemption, but the clarity, they, in the application, they say they're going to have these special events that benefit Phillips Town. Well, I am Phillips Town, and the people of this audience, this room are Phillips Town, and the people who live in Garrison are Phillips Town. And they're beginning to fail to see how this proposed development is going to benefit them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, can I just clarify a question? So there is no exemption to the light and sound because it goes through the special event permit?
It requires a special use permit.
And then that, the, leaving a building permit open for 20 years, is that, does that clarify?
Steve, can you adjust that?
It seems like the zoning says if anything is going to be built in the future, it needs to go through a permanent planning.
Right. The idea with that is that the project is not going to be built all at once. If it was built all at once, it would be quite disruptive. It's going to be built over time. In fact, you know, although it's anticipated, some things will be built in the future, they're going to be dependent on how things develop as, as it goes along. They'll certainly have the right to do it, that's not necessarily, they have an obligation to do it. So the idea here is that over time, this property will be developed, they don't want to have to keep coming back for building permits. It's recognized that this is a long, overtime project, and that's why that provision is being put in law.
Basically, it would be similar to the site plan that was approved for the Garrison Golf Course, which included hotel space, there was an...
Which, which was never built.
Which was never built. There was an extent...
And it's not 20 years, it's 15 with an opportunity to extend for five.
So that, and that's a good example, that was also approved for a, a large facility, which never happened.
And a spa.
Right, right.
But that's, so the site plan gets approved, but then there's a 20-year or 15-year building permit to build out the site plan, the one that's approved.
I have a quick question. This is my silly question. Could they just build anything they want, or was, like, what's, it's all, right, it's that's it? They're not going to be able to add?
Limited by the...
Okay. They have to go back to the whole...
And if it was big enough, they wind up reopening SECR, so I mean, it's really pretty well identified.
I suppose what I was talking about was that clause that states that, that the law and that, I just called it a building permit. But the clause in the zoning, and I forgot my copy, so I can't...
Okay.
But the clause that reads...
Is it the future improvements?
It was all highlighted and everything. That's why I said hi. You're quick. Okay, this isn't, this is not, I don't have a page, but the page begins with the number, I mean, the letter H. So this is kind of where I got the 20-year time limit, and it says, "Provisions of Town Code Blah Prescribing a Three-Year Time Period for Commencement of Uses and Completion of Approved Construction Within a Planned Development District, and Prescribing a One-Year Limit on Extensions of Time for Commencement of Such Uses and Completion of Such Construction Shall Not Apply to Development, to this development. Instead, within the GCC PDD, the time period applicable under Town Code for the commencement uses of completion of approval construction shall be 15 years with an extension of five." So that's kind of why I called it a building permit, because the Town Code says for planned development, you get three years with a one-year extension. They're asking for 15 years with a five-year extension. And I'm just...
I think it's to prevent an onslaught of construction and disruption to the community, and the development will be over a 15-year period. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, and it can't exceed anything that's not identified on the site plan, so...
I understand.
So there is, whatever the adopted site plan is, that's it. It's not, and if they alter that, they have to come back.
I understand that. One of the good things that, about SECR is that they make developers say, "Show us your whole entire plan," and then, you know, shoot them, you know, do them as you do, so they don't just say, "Here's my one plan," and go out. I, I do get that, but that still is an extensive amount of time. I mean, clearly, the law, they thought that the law was enough when they created this law, that three years with a one-year extension is enough for a development plan. I mean, this kind of goes to the scope of just how huge this is, and again, just how the control and the clarity, and maybe some of that control and clarity and defined limitations comes from making it a seven-year project or a 10-year project, so they don't get every building built, you know? Then they can go back through the process again if they want to. Maybe they'll realize they don't want to, maybe they've changed their mind on some of the buildings. I mean, anything can happen. They've already changed their mind that they're not having Shakespeare and not even calling it Shakespeare, and we just don't know. And 20 years is a long time to not know.
Could somebody from Shakespeare, would you like to address why you selected such a long time period, or who selected it, or the intent?
Sure. I, I don't have the, a copy of the existing PDD, but this may be a carryover from the existing golf course PDD. I'm not sure whether this is something that we...
From the other site plan that was there?
No, not, not, yes, from the other site plan, but in the, in the PDD that was adopted in 2005, this may be already in the law. I'm not sure whether this is something that...
So it is something that we would be possibly altered if the board self...
It could be, but I wanted to, you know, to explain why this is important to Shakespeare, and that is that this is a nonprofit institution that has to raise funds to build the theater, artist housing. And the other thing is that this is, the site plan is not getting approved all at once by the planning board right now. What the planning board has in front of it is the site plan for Phase 1, which includes the theater and some supporting buildings like bathrooms, ticket sales, concessions, things like that. We, Shakespeare will have to come back before the planning board to get the next phase, Phase 2 of the site plan approved. So that's like artist lodging, things like that, so...
And that's if they choose to do that.
If they, if they raise the money and they're able to, to do that. So this, this recognizes that Shakespeare does not have the money to do all of it all at once. That's where we're doing it in pieces, and the, and this gives Shakespeare the flexibility to build things out as they raise the money in accordance with the site plan that's been approved by, you know, not, not changing the site plan. If they change the site plan, they've got to go back to the planning board and get, so it's not 15 years to do whatever they want, it's 15 years to build out what, what has been approved.
Is there any particular reason why there's no Shakespeare on the venue this year particularly? I'm just curiosity why that may be the case.
Hi, Dave. Hi, everybody, I'm Davis McCollum, I'm the artistic director at Shakespeare. I just wanted to address Bob's question about the programming this year. There is a play called "By the Queen," which is a, a kind of stitching together of four Shakespeare plays, Henry the Sixth, Part 1, 2, and 3, and Richard III, and we're just making it into one evening and calling it "By the Queen." So it's a little bit of a, it's a, it's a little bit of a misunderstanding that there's no Shakespeare, that's a play that, that's made up of four individual Shakespeare plays. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. I mean, every year they do other plays besides Shakespeare, right? There's always one or two, right? And I think that's a good thing, because not everyone likes Shakespeare, all right? I mean, I've been to Shakespeare plays that, I said, "What the hell am I doing here?" To be honest with you. But, no, I'm just saying, I mean, I go, go to, but some of them I don't really understand. So I think it's a good idea to branch out and have other things besides Shakespeare from time to time.
And aren't there also educational, like, in the classroom activities revolving around Shake, the Shakespeare?
Councilwoman Farrell's question was about, are there educational opportunities that have to do with Shakespeare?
The company is going to...
And the answer is yes. We're doing a production of Much Ado About Nothing that tours to schools all over the Hudson Valley. I think it reaches 20,000 kids and educators this year, and that will also be a part of the, I mean, it's getting rehearsed on the, on this, on the site where the Shakespeare Festival rehearses our productions.
Thank you.
Sin?
I don't think it's in our purview to prescribe the artistic direction of the Shakespeare Festival, really.
Theater will be what...
Yes, Sin.
I think this document could be greatly improved by striking one word, which is "only." You cannot grant a monopoly to whatever this ill-defined performance is. I think there's so many other things that could be done. Oh, for instance, the costume parade that took place in the fall, where is that permitted? A hot air balloon demonstration, where is that permitted? There are so many things that are cultural and exciting and beautiful, outdoor sculpture like the Omai in Ghent, New York. So much to do. So I would do that. Again, a banquet and meeting facility, but is that permitted for music and how much? You know, it's ill-defined.
That's the existing facility. The banquet is...
But, so I think striking the word "only" would be the great improvement to this document. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to add one thing. I mean, given the 15 years, I mean, things change, as, as everyone knows, right? They start out with different, different things, and five years down the road, instead of maybe... They start out with different different things and five years down the road, instead of maybe building ten artist houses, maybe they only need five. So that's gonna give them some time to rethink things and adjust as during this period as things come up. I mean, so you don't want to overbuild a site for any particular reason. Right, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, it gives them time to to make adjustments as they see fit oh in the time period that they have in this fifteen years as well. That's just my thoughts.
Yes, sir. Don't worry.
Good evening. My name is Howard Davis. Learned about the meeting tonight, but I'd just make a couple of comments to the proposed revision to the statute. There was a question, there was a comment though, before I just go into a couple of the comments. Sure. There was one comment made that I just wanted the clarification on regarding what was before the planning board. That what was before the planning board was only of the first phase. And my understanding was that the all of the anticipated building was to be before the planning board. And that went through the secret process in great detail, had, as you probably have monitored, an enormous amount of public participation in that. And in fact, the project was was revised in light of comments. So I'm just a little confused about the process and maybe you could just tell me what's going on.
The the secret review was for the entire scope of the project, but in terms of the site plan, it's being broken up into phases. So the planning board has reviewed the entire build out, including all the artist lodging. That's, you know, everything that's that could be planned, that's thought of at this moment, has gone through the secret process. But what's in front of the planning board in terms of the site plan is just the the beginning of the theater and the supporting structures.
Appreciate the clarification. I just wasn't aware that there was something before the planning board following the secret process and following that approval. So apparently there is something specifically before the planning board in addition, first phase. So just going through the the local proposed local law modifications. Now, this was drafted, was this drafted by the applicant or is this drafted by the board's attorney?
The applicant proposed and we did some adjustments to.
Okay. In the definitions, where there's a definition of a pertinent facility, feature or building or other structure designed or intended to accommodate specific activities necessary. You add in or customary, customarily associated. I think that that's that's too broad. So if it's necessary for what went through the secret process and approved, that should be sufficient. Shouldn't have some additional wiggle room. They should be, it went through a great extent of analyzing what they would do, how they would do it. And it should be limited to that. Striking customarily. Permitted uses under number four, you have artist and guest lodging. Again, secret process went through artists and residents. You know, there was this this discussion about hotels and which was scaled back, removed. So it's a guest is something that should be removed.
Which one, sorry?
Uh, this is under D, permitted uses.
Right here, artist and guest lodging, yeah. But that's all identified on the site plan, correct? The artist and guest lodging, there's no increase of it, so it's it's part of the.
But this is part of the the zoning changes. In terms of what goes through the planning board, that's the whole point. That the zoning change should be consistent with what went through the secret process and not not beyond and expand it. And just really philosophically, what, you know, there was a a great outpouring of people in Phillips Town and both for and against this. And there was there was a development of through the planning book process, planning would approve certain things. To have limits, it's really important. We don't, no one can predict the future, but it's really important for this board to really maintain the legal structure and limits that is consistent with that process and not have it expanded because you can drive a truck through some of these expansions.
Unless I'm missing something, but the artist and guest lodging, the facilities are designated on the site plan.
The facilities are, so that's the facility, but it was also talked about the use, that it would be artist in residence and not hotel uses or other guests that would come in. So while, you know, because you really don't know what's gonna be in the future in terms of what they might be able to do with language. So what they talked about doing.
So you're saying so somebody else would use it other than an artist or a guest?
Went through a secret process specifically understanding it would be artists in residence. That that's the process that they went through.
Clarify that for, I mean, from the outside, I was heard that that's artist housing. But then I also understood that when it's not artist housing, it could be used to rent to guests. But that's.
See, that wasn't discussed.
Listening and reading articles.
That's might be what what the intent is, and that's the point to clarify.
If it's a three bedroom or whatever, I mean, it's still gonna be that facility, depending on who's staying in there. It's not gonna be any more impact to the community, so I don't.
Well, that's not so, because you're talking, there was a specific understanding of when it would be used, how it would be used, scale back the timing, scale back the impact to people who are who are living in the in the area.
So you're saying eliminate it as a full-time residency?
Well, by adding it, yes, it was specifically talked.
I'm just trying to get to what.
No, no, getting to it was artists in residence, which has a certain impact because it's a certain time. And guests expand that. So it it the secret process, which is the limiting, legal limiting obligation. This goes beyond that because it includes a now, a, I'm hearing it for the first time, that this also including guests. That was not talked about as part of the secret process, as far as I know.
I'm not sure.
Right, but it's important because it can't, this shouldn't expand beyond what the secret process did, because that analyzed the impact. So you you really can't go beyond that analysis of what the impact would be and what was agreed to.
I mean, I I look at the impact as the facility, not not the people that are in it.
No, no, the the impact clearly under SECR includes people.
Steve, you agree with that? I mean, I I don't see.
Well, the intent here was clearly the artist lodging. I don't see a problem unless the applicant does with removing the words and guests as far as that goes. It's, I I understand the point. It could be used in the future by someone to say, well, guest lodging could be anything. Let's put in a hotel. Let's put in, I think that unlikely, but you know, if there's no reason to have it in there, why not take it out?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that this was part of the secret review. Not not only the concept that the artist lodging might be used to rent out in the off season to to guests. But then that was part of the secret review. But this proposal with this list of uses was part of the secret review. It's it's not just the planning board action that was reviewed in the EIS. It's also the town boards.
The identical list was before the.
This identical list was before was before the planning board in the secret review process. It was an appendix to the DEIS and the zoning changes that this board is now considering. SECR was complied with for this board through the EIS process that the planning board conducted, including the review of the impacts of changing the law in this way.
Do you want Ian Guest left in?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this is a legal issue, isn't it? So I I think it's something incumbent on this board to really look at very hard, take a hard look at that one. Because there's, you know, turning this into a, really hotels, nothing to stop them, no, no res, no artists, all guests. There has to, that's the whole point.
But it's still limited to the number of facilities that are being approved by the site plan, regardless of who's in.
Timing, how, when is it open? How is it open? I mean.
I mean, I would assume it's open all the time.
The planning board is only one aspect. That's planning board. Zoning is a different level of review. How do you change those? And what we're trying to do, I think philosophically, you want to do this, is to limit it so that you can assess what the impact will be. If the applicant comes back at some future time, wants to make changes, they'll have to go through a process. It can't be built in at this point because you're creating too much flexibility.
Practicality of us knowing if it's a guest or an artist.
You have to.
I mean, how would we?
It wasn't.
And how would we know if it's occupied?
It was not intended to be a hotel. It was intended to be, it was talked about through the to the community that that the, they were having difficulties getting talent who had to stay in Fishkill. That's that's the impetus of this. So now we're saying that's not that important. We can have guests and have other people stay here because that's not really important. That's not what was talked about. That's 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 not a, that's a misrepresentation of what they were intending, if that's what they're intending and saying now. This was an art, the the point of this was to support the Shakespeare group. And they needed to have or wanted to have a change, instead of putting people up outside, have them here. That's what led to this. And so now to expand it, which seems to be what the intent was, I'm hearing.
I don't see what you're.
It was all about artists.
I understand that.
So why why shouldn't it be all about artists? Why are we, why are you considering expanding it? Keep it about artists. Have them have their artists. They can stay there.
This is what was reviewed in the SECR and this is what.
It was not talked about. Go back and listen to the to the to the tip.
I don't have.
And it's a legal issue, so I think that that's what you have to do. And if you come to a conclusion that it's okay, but it's 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 an issue. It's it was not, it was talked about, the whole basis was to have artists.
And how many units are there? Indeterminate or something.
Are these ones that are under a thousand square feet? There's eight of them or there?
I think there's, does anyone know what, how many units there are? Hundreds of units?
Is right in the beginning, there's a reference to keys.
Yeah.
To Nolan Garrison, there's a reference at the beginning to keys and what keys means in this document. And I was interested in that because I thought that was going to help me understand about the artist housing. It never comes up again that I can find in the document. So there's a definition of a term that's gonna be used in the document that I can't find in the document. Again, do you see where keys comes up at the beginning?
It's a lodging unit with one to three bedrooms.
Yes, exactly right. And that seems to indicate we're going to get to the point where we talk about artist housing or artist and guest housing, however, that gets boxed out. It never comes up again. And it was in my notes at the top as something that needs to be, that's a loop that needs to be closed. And to and to Howard's point, I I think there is a difference between housing artists and housing guests. And that the impetus behind this, if we go back twenty years or so, was that we used to put actors up at St. Mary's or your house or my house or wherever it was. And that's become onerous and burdensome over time and that this is a solution to that problem. That's artists. And as I listen, it seems to me there's two or three places where it would be to our benefit as a town if we tightened things a little bit. We can exclude them, but we tighten them. I don't understand why it wouldn't be to the town's benefit to tighten that construction horizon some. It is it onerous on the applicant, but it gives us more control. Nobody knows what's gonna happen in the future. A three-year horizon is a more manageable horizon than a five or a twenty-year horizon. And I do understand that that this is incremental, that it's phased, that they're funding dependent and all of those things. But that seems like a place to me where maybe it would be wiser to be a little bit more conservative in how we, the town, you guys, watched this, managed it and had a tool at your disposal, if you needed it, to manage things a little more closely. That's it. I'd love to know keys, artists.
Can can you just let us know, how many units are we are being considered? Okay, I mean, ten, twenty, can you, at ballpark?
It was less than the number that is already permitted within the PDD.
Which is already permitted on the property.
Right, well, the the golf course had the zoning permitted a forty-room hotel or an inn that was never built. So the artist lodging was designed to be less than that number. But I wanted to, you know, just address the idea that that we're hiding the ball on this. I mean, as the as the council member noted, this this was part of the of the idea. And it's been, the idea that the artist lodging might be used for guests when it's not occupied by artists was part of the review. And in fact, all of the water calculations assume year-round occupancy. So no impact has gone unreviewed in terms of people being in those rooms when an artist is not in the room. I guess the question, Howard, you're raising, the legal question is is confirming that it was part of the secret process, that that both artist and guest housing was part of the secret process.
And to how it was talked about.
And then the discussion amongst the board is if that changes, thinking about that as not only being artist housing, but being guest housing as well. But the legal question you're referring to is if it was part of the secret process.
Well, that that's essentially the issue. And so, you know, it now raises other questions. So he's, you know, talking about, you know, water calculations and one would have to really go back and look at those calculations, see how what was included and see if guests were included, see if they're not, to to analyze it.
Calculations were done for SECR, considering it full-time occupation, to be occupied all the time. I mean.
Okay.
We're not doing the secret review here tonight, that's for sure.
What you're doing is based on the on the back of the SECR, you're now looking at zoning changes. So the assumption, it's important, I think, for council and.
Well, we could clarify that for sure.
I mean, you really do need to look back, frankly, I.
Thank you.
Don't know what they did in terms of the calculations as I'm standing here. Can see when we go back and look and see what's consistent or otherwise. But the point really being, I think, what Tim was saying, you know, you you want to keep it constrained till there's a track record and trust. To to grow it out without that, not knowing really what what will be, is something that you can avoid. The the unintended consequence of try to limit it by keeping it constrained. You know, to to create good neighbors, to have this move forward, but keep it constrained for now, for this process. If there's something that needed to be adjusted because of whatever, we address it at that point. But you try to keep it as constrained as you can now and see where it goes. So that comment, I think you need to look into again what the secret is. The parade permit. That's not, I mean, we went through this extensive process on what Shakespeare would do there, how they would do there. And now the parade permit just adds a complete new, unreviewed layer to potential operations there. And I think we from, you know, now have learned parade permit is not really a parade that, you know, the town board has allowed. It's a it's a title. So it's basically saying, as long as it comes, so you can do anything at all without any, because within the zoning statute, we're gonna allow it. And that's, again, something would strongly suggest should be removed. Keep it constrained. If there's a need for something, later, come back. Don't let this become at this point.
I mean, the approval process would go through us for any event outside of their normal operation.
But you see, that that that's not a zoning change. You're building into the zoning to to have a different legal standard. The the parade permit first was not reviewed as part of SECR and therefore I think cannot be included in this now. But even if it could, it shouldn't. It should be just what they said it would be Shakespeare. And now there's suggestions that there's some maybe not Shakespeare. But it's it's performance-based in the Shakespeare.
So that theater should stay in there and only produce Shakespeare events?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying Shakespeare. The parade permit, which is not what they're talking about, other things that have not been reviewed. And you have these other criteria, which can go through specifically. But I think the fact of having a special events. But I think the fact of having a special events parade permit had, which has not been reviewed under SECRE, should not be included at this time in a zoning change. You have to go through SECRE again. The one C, where you look at, you know, events must be accompanied by the following information.
Yeah. Howard, can I ask a question? I, I don't quite understand it. So like the permitted uses are defined for Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, 13 special events is named. If there's going to be a special event held on those grounds that are outside of the permitted uses that are defined, then Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival would have to go through the special event parade permit process like any other entity in the town of Phillips Town. Is the point you're making that that special event, that's any entity that wants to do a special event? And you're, you're, the point you're making is that that special event should not be in there?
That's correct.
For, yeah, for what, for what reason?
Well, we went through SECRE with specifically the analysis of Shakespeare. It's projected...
For the site, not for an event, but for the site.
We went through for the site and the anticipated use and events. That was reviewed in great detail, what traffic would be, what water would be, what, what, you know, all of the, the various factors of the environmental impacts were based upon those uses. And now you're saying, well, an unknown use, so long as you go through a process before the board to get approval, but that wasn't reviewed as part of SECRE. And it can be significant. And in fact, it's, it's different than, I mean, you just look at the criteria, expected levels of any extraordinary noise. I mean, there was a, there were noise studies, there were discussions of what the limits would be. You know, noise is set by statute. You know, extraordinary is a, certainly a extraordinary term. And light, so it was extraordinary noise under a light, expected levels which, which suggest to be anything.
But this would all come before the board.
Right. And any violation of that is addressed. Anytime there's a violation, we send them.
Zoning, the zoning requirements have a different legal standard than your parade permit. So that fact that it comes before is insufficient, number one, because it didn't go through SECRE. But you shouldn't have that at this time in this statute. It should be just the anticipated Shakespeare and performance uses beyond this unstated amount of parade. Anything can go in. Want to have a concert? We'll just have a concert. You want to have, have a gathering? Have a gathering. Those are not included in, they shouldn't be included in the zoning authorized uses, permitted uses.
So Howard, you're making the point that because no, even if it was taken out of the zoning, they would still have to, like any other entity, go through the special event parade permitting process? That is better, and I don't know, this is a legal question, that you leave it out because that's already covered by other town regulation? Any event, any special event would have to go through?
The existing planned development zoning has a provision in it very similar to this. And it's for the exact same reason. There may be occasions on which you want to have a use that's different than the performance use that Shakespeare's proposing. But I can assure you that the SECRE review that was undertaken by the planning board encompassed any use that would be made of the board under the proposed special...
I'm going to disagree with that. I, 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 I mean, you can assure, but there, you go to the videotapes and, and there is an issue about what was proposed, what was talked about, and any use was not talked about and was not approved. This, it's, it's an issue then. And if that's what the position of the board is, that somehow anything can be done on the site after you went through this extensive...
That's not true because anything would have to come before the board. Oh, I don't know why you're shaking.
It was not part of SECRE.
What's that?
It was not part of SECRE. They didn't do the analysis of what would be the impacts. You need to look at what the impacts are. It wasn't at that time done. It was very specific, looking at who would be there, how many people would be there. A parade of undesigned amounts, it wasn't talked about. And I don't know that why you need it at this point. I mean, this is the point. You know, you're, you're dealing with trying to establish trust between a community and, and now a new, you know, community program. Then there, you should limit it to what Shakespeare said it would be, what was in the SECRE process.
There is a list of things and outside that list would require a permit by this board. So I think that is a limit.
I guess that, that is, if that's the position, you should go take a look at SECRE and see if parade permit was talked about and approved as part of the planning board process.
All right. Can we wrap it up? Other people are going to need to speak. Thank you.
Same thing with additional...
I don't want to say this, but I do want to ask the question, I guess, why, and I don't know if there's a Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival prerogative question, why would it be important to keep it? If any entity in town, if they were going to do an event, can apply for a special event permit?
Well, I don't think it can. I think it has to be within the zoning requirements. So you're basically talking about a zoning law that allows certain things to happen and if it's not in there, then it, it doesn't happen. So the point is to not have the zoning, to not have a parade permit at this time to allow Shakespeare to, to, to be there. And if there's something that they want to change in the future, change it.
If, if any, if any event wanted to do an event that required a special event permit, they would have to file it.
Correct.
Only if it's permitted by zoning. Only if the use is permitted by zoning.
Not permitted by zoning. They'd have to come before us.
Yeah. What I'm saying is that, that in order to do something at a certain place, it has to be within the zoning. And if it's not within the zoning, they can't do it.
Right. As far as the limitations of the building, is that what you're, I mean, we're looking at two different things.
We don't know what parade means. We don't know what they're, what anyone is talking about by that.
That word parade is general.
That would be true of any event in Phillips Town.
Exactly. You're having a zoning change, a specific zoning change to allow certain activities to happen here that never happened before in this, in, in this location. And therefore you should limit it to those, not to have some unnamed amount of activity that, that someone can come to the board and do anything there. It's a specific approve, approval for activities, not anything. And even if they have to come back to the board, you're basically saying we are pre-putting into the zoning statute the ability to do anything there. That's not what was talked about.
That's what it states. That's not what it states.
But that is.
That was very useful, if you, if you don't mind, or I can repeat it.
No, that's, that's fine as far as that goes. Special events are allowed, as Howard says, by zoning. It has to be in a property in which special events are allowed. And if they are allowed, then you can apply for a special event permit. If you aren't in zoning, which allows special events, then you can't apply for a special event permit. You couldn't have a special event at your house, for example. So by putting the special event as a permitted use on this property, you qualify it for special events. Now, Howard and I disagree as far as the scope of the SECRE review that was undertaken, but that's a separate issue as to whether or not you think this is a good idea. If you want to allow special events on this property and you think it is a good idea, then you're going to want to keep it in. If you do not think it is a good idea to allow special events, then perhaps you feel otherwise about this language.
But the special event permit would still come through the same process. And the building, the facility or wherever the event is happening would permit it, which is in this use, but they would still have to come to us for a special use for it. So I, I don't see that...
Well, if you think it's a good idea, you think it's a good idea. If you don't think it's a good idea, well, then you don't.
It just allows Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to have special events potentially.
Yes.
Which any other facility that qualifies would also...
That qualifies.
Yes. Like the rec center. Graymore, we went through to Graymore. There's, there's other facility.
I would like to use an example. They decided to have a parade, the lighting parade or something like that. And they set up speakers, sound speakers, all across the whole property. And I was part of that, even though I didn't pay for it or be part of it, because they had the ability to do anything they wanted as far as sound. And so they set up speakers everywhere and it, it, it was a, a bad pollution.
Did anybody complain? Because we have, again, we have got zero.
Yes. I, I, I didn't know we had a right to you. This was all in front of the planning board, all of these letters that were written.
Or 911, actually. If there's an event going, we, and we do get those for other facilities. If there's an event going on where there's too much noise, we, we hear it.
That, that is the point. The, you know, this is a new use in that place and no one wants to call 911 or have to go down to watch everything that goes behind the, for the board. I'm not sure even a parade permit is public, but that's the point. Limit it. Additional parking, the, so part of the special events, as it stands now, application, amount and location of additional parking. I mean, it's like you're anticipating this massive thing that might be required, the location of additional parking and whether it's to be accommodated onsite or offsite. This is like, let's, let's invite massive possibilities here because it's included in the zoning. That's a mistake, serious mistake.
The approval would have to go before that.
It's a serious mistake, even if you're putting that as, it is. Even if it gives you that, that ability, means now you're, you're requiring the people who live in that neighborhood every time to have to come here and do that. I, I, I just think that that's number one inconsistent, wasn't talked about ever at the EIS and it's not a good idea.
We've had other special permits rejected, trust me. And if they, if they exceed what's reasonable, what we feel as representatives is not a reasonable use, we, we turn it down.
This is a new use with people who live there, who have lived there for a very long time. It's a new use.
Well, there, there wasn't, it wasn't a quiet place to begin with. There was a banquet facility, there used to be enormous barbecues on that facility. So it's not like it was a strictly a golf course or an open field there. So there were, there were plenty of large events that took place at that facility for decades. So it, it's not a new use. It's a changed...
Consistent with the prior uses that are specified in the zoning, those continue. The unidentified parade permit uses, don't include that now. Beg it.
Just clarification question. The, Howard, you're, you're, you're talking about all of these listings, A through I of the special event permit. Are those just the same exact listings that would be in any special event permit? Or are they different?
These were specified to these particular uses.
The site plan.
But they generally would be the same as far as that goes.
They were on the original site, not the original, the Garrison Golf Course site plan.
I don't doubt it because it was a similar type of use.
Okay. The, there was enormous amount of discussion about parking, about cars. And this just goes away with all of the conversations, all of the analysis. But it does because we don't know what that analysis is.
The permit's got to go through us. We have, I don't know why you're shaking.
I'm shaking my head because that's not the same standard. The standard of going through you is, is a different standard than what went through SECRE for the purposes of planning board and for the basis for the zoning. So what, what, what you're saying is that you're, even though it wasn't identified, analyzed of what it could be, because in fact the opposite happened, there were specific representations of what would be there and when, and limitations of the amount of cars, traffic studies that were based upon the Shakespeare amount. And now we're talking about an unknown unspecified designation of anything.
What, what would still require approval from us, from this board?
Yes, without standard.
Without what?
Without, without the standard that was required to have been reviewed as part of SECRE.
Well, we understand what, what's in there. We understand the parking limits to that facility. We've, they've operated for the last two years under those permits and we've had zero complaints of traffic or parking.
And they're going to get their approval presumably?
Does Shakespeare play the last two years? No, just checking. Thanks.
So Shakespeare is not going to be eliminated from, by eliminating the, the parade permit. They're going to be able to operate there. It's other things that are unknown and unspecified.
But we, we just, there were other events.
But everyone knew what Shakespeare was, presumably. They were testing it out. They were coming, they were, they were operating there.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up because there are other people who would like to speak, I'm sure.
Um, identification of any offsite resources that might be utilized, remote parking areas, shuttle buses, bus routes, traffic studies didn't incorporate that.
Goes through us.
The description, no, but that, but the SECRE didn't include it. It needs to.
Okay.
It needed to. Description of location of any special sanitary accommodations that were required or statement that none are required. Again, there was extensive analysis of the amount of water, the amount of waste, the amount of use, part of SECRE. This wasn't. Therefore, that's, that's the point really. You know, they went through enormous amount of effort to, to analyze what would be used there. And, and you want to avoid having that just be wastepaper. First aid, police or other public health and safety, same. You know, based upon the specific use, they went around and reviewed whether there would be, police were available or public health. You can't, you can't just do this without the SECRE full review. In, in terms of future improvements, under number two, subject to F3 minor structures anywhere within the district, may be approved by zoning administration officer. I mean, I just think you have to define what that is and so that there's, again, controls over what they're planning to do with the building.
Our building codes and obviously require a building permit.
Right.
Want to avoid the circumstance where what they agreed to in terms of what they're going to build is actually, it provides a structure and a limit. And so by, want to make sure that language doesn't inadvertently allow them to do things that they had not previously analyzed and, and was approved and, and reviewed at the Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. Happy New Year. For those that don't know me, I'm Stephen Wallace, Southern Garrison. My property is a neighbor to the Garrison Golf Club and, uh, so I wrote a little thing because I wasn't sure what the parameter is for, for showing up here, if it had a time limit or something like that. So I'll read a bit of it and maybe we'll have a little discussion. But I just want to say, like, uh, I moved, we live right opposite the north boundary of the Garrison Golf Club and future cultural development.
So you're on the end where the current banquet facility, that would be...
No. I live where, on, on Phillips Brook, just between, next to, really next to Route Nine kind of area, there are two houses over there. I also have neighbors up above me on Fox Glove, which is a private lane. And my, my property is actually kind of high up. So we get the noise, we're not down by the brook, which gets, you know, it absorbs the sound or whatever. I'd love, I wanted to kind of jump up as I was hearing some of the conversation or, you know, dialogue and stuff like that, because like, I don't really complain a lot, you know? I mean, I don't, it's not my way. I'm busy. I run a couple of different companies and stuff like that. I'm always on the fly. And, um, I, I mean, it's straight up, like, last summer we had, uh, there was one, uh, play that wasn't part of the, of, it wasn't Shakespeare, that Davis had written, I guess, maybe. But, um, it was loud. They were banging drums. Like, I have to say, like, just to say, like, I moved to Garrison not for the nightlife. Okay? Like, I moved to Garrison, we, my family moved to Garrison, like, we love it. I call it rose-colored glass land. Okay? And, um, like, I'd fight for it. And I, I'm a great cheerleader of it. This process of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare wanting to come into the property of the Garrison Golf Club, it's been stressful. Like, straight up. I have not enjoyed it. Because, you know, man's home is castle, it's kind of like mantra, whatever, but, you know, it's our, it's our home and my family lives there and we want to live, I want to live in quiet. And my whole thing, all right, so my house was a foreclosure. And I jumped on that thing and I busted my hump for it. We were, had property on East Mountain North and were going to develop that. My wife wanted it, didn't want to live there because she was worried about being isolated. And she, I said, find something else. And she found that. A jaw-dropping kind of thing. And I spent six months busting my hump for it. And when we moved there, my wife and I, we're very private. Like, we have a fence that we put... Like, we have a fence that we put in, like, just rabbit deer fence all around the property that's walkable or whatever, to keep what's in in and what's out out, okay? We had a neighbor over there, had a nice house, I put arbovite in because I didn't want to see them. When I go to the beach, like, y'all are kind of over there, I'm going that way or that way. I don't want to hear what you're talking about. I don't want to smell you, I don't want to hear it, I'm just not interested. I just want my space. I'm a very private person and it's important. Like, the way, like, even on social media, like, I never put my daughters' names on there or anything. We're private, we keep our things really tight. And, you know, so my privacy, our privacy, my family's privacy, I'm speaking for my family, is really important. And I'm speaking from the heart, like, this could kinda, you know, I don't, you know, and I don't want, I can talk a lot, people that know me know that I can talk a lot, sorry. But, you know, it is upsetting and I, I'm not, Davis knows this, that, and I said it before, that when they had a real hard time in 2020 and they had flex passes, you know I've talked about this before, like, I'm not a rich guy, okay? I am a working man. Seven days a week, I bust it happily and proudly. And my wife mentioned it to me, to me, and she's a real, we're community, she's really community. And we bought four flex passes, not knowing if they would ever survive, as an investment into the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival and our community. And when people would come over visiting us, I'd say like, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, you gotta go see it. So we're not, I'm not here against the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, clearly. I like to say what I'm for, by the way, not what I'm against. I'm a positive mental attitude person, okay? But like, this scope of this project is massive. And it's kind of like Shakespeare on steroids. And I'm, you know, I'm not putting it down, I'm not trying to be rude or anything to any, like, uppity, I'm just saying. But I want to be clear, like, this is alarming. Because I'm not, I refuse to be collateral damage. I mean, I've thought, you might go, oh, the sirens are going. I've thought, I've reached out to lawyers and I don't want to be litigious. I could have had litigious things even on East Mountain and I was like, eh. I got hit so many brick walls and something up there was saying like, forget it, like, just get out of here. But I could have been litigious, people like really blew it, including the Putnam County Board of Health giving me a, Glenn knows it, a, what do you call it, a Board of Health approval in a wetland. And I could have sued the engineer and Putnam County and I was like, eh, not meant to be. But I'm just saying, like, I've consulted lawyers and it's become, I don't want to. But I want to fight, I fight. I'm looking at y'all straight, like, I fight for what I believe in and my privacy and my happiness and my neighbor's happiness. I can't tell you how many neighbors I hear it from who don't want to go out doing what I'm doing right now. They do not. And some of them have like a lot of money, I'm like, come on, help me out. But they don't want to go there. But they're all being impacted and I'm worried about this, the document, I don't have it here. The document is concerning. I've bought real estate, I own property, I run a business, I'm, I don't advertise, I'm successful, that's all. And but like, I say what I mean, I mean what I say. This document, I read it like, oh my God. Like, I just was shocked by it. Because there's so many, you know, you have to trust, I go into meetings or in relationships trusting people. But sometimes the people that you trust might not be cleared. And if you give them a blank, you know, blank thing, they might be like taken advantage. So the, I'll say my concerns, okay? And it's real. And I'm hoping that we can bring this back. Because none of my, I know, I can't speak for my neighbors, but I'm speaking for my neighbors, okay? And I'm just saying, like, and there's a group of us, I mean, what I wrote here, okay? Just, I'll use a little bit of this. The town of Phillips Town has decided to adopt the Municipal Home Rule Law, which grants local governments the authority to enact local laws regarding the public health, safety and welfare. I believe that this new proposed code entitled Garrison Cultural Conservation Plan Development District, or GCCPDD, does not take into account the health, safety and welfare of the neighbors surrounding the Garrison Golf Club. So if y'all, I mean, I'm not like saying like, I pay your salary or anything. I'm saying like, I'm a taxpaying citizen community member and there are a whole bunch of us who are living residentially in RC 10, 10 acres. And so I never have had, I never had an issue. We had like a tiny little issue with the Garrison Golf Club with their, because I wanted to jump up when you were saying, oh, you know, prior things. Well, I've lived there for maybe, I don't know, 15 years or something. I've never had a fight with a golfer or a, you know, I've never been alarmed by it once. I know my neighbor up here, a little bit above me, had some issues. She walked, she got in touch and it's like that was it. I work my butt off during the days. When I come at home at night, I do not want to hear, what, can you imagine? Any of you, I ask, okay? You work hard, you work hard, I know that, we all work hard. You get home and then you're gonna have that event, an event place, you know, production development. Whether they're nonprofit or not or whatever, doing Shakespeare, it doesn't matter to me. It's still, call it what it is, it's a big, large commercial event where they're selling tickets, not giving them away, right? I'm just saying, I'm not, and I'm, I'll try and be, I'm sorry if I'm being long winded, but it's important to me because I've been bottled up and watching this for three years. And, you know, I haven't, you know, there's not a lot of places where I can go out and reach my community of 1,000 Garrison people. Like, I don't own a newspaper and I don't, I don't really, I don't have a lot of friends on Facebook, you know? Just saying, it's not interesting to me. You know, it's like, I don't care, I don't advertise it, but, well, anyway. So my concerns are many. The size of this development project is massive. The areas surrounding the GGC are single family and RC zoning. I worry the size of this project will overwhelm my community. And we're there for the nature. Anyone that lives in Garrison for the party or doesn't live there for nature is not living in Garrison. I find that this development district law misses on many critical issues and I'm afraid that this developer or future developers will seize upon points that are lacking in this document. It's kinda, I just wasn't impressed, that's all. I've been, I've been, you know, I'm educated. I am not against HVSF becoming my new neighbor. I just want to make sure that our, to be sure that our personal space is not invaded by the potential business being conducted next door to my residential lifestyle. You hear those words, like, this is a resident, we're a residential zone and we're gonna have to, you know, I've said this before in public, in the Highlands Cart, I've written this many times. A new neighbor needs to adapt to the neighborhood, not the neighborhood adapting to the new neighbor. We are gonna have to adapt to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival being there.
However, that property was approved for a large commercial development already, so there is?
Completely different. Completely, John, just please.
I mean, there was quite a potential for development on that property.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that the sound of someone, like that.
No, no, I mean, what wasn't developed, what was, what was not developed on that property, but was part of the site plan approval was enormous, there was.
You mean the now, now or before in the past?
The existing one right now, not the one that's proposed, but the existing.
I'm not arguing the fact, I'm stating, I'm stating my fact. You can state your fact.
So I'm just saying, it's not like this is moving into a residential neighborhood. That property had permitted uses which were never denied, I'm just making that point.
But let's be clear, okay? Alright, because I live there, I know this stuff, I'm just saying, like, you're gonna have, my biggest thing in here is sound. And also, I don't want, look, again, I said how I go to the beach and everything like that, non-private. I don't want to, I don't want to hear them, I don't want to smell them, I don't want to, I just don't want to see them. I want them to live in their space, just like any neighbor you would expect. But like, we've sat, my wife and I have been in our dining room saying, what's that? And last summer it was like boom, 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 boom. And I'm like, are you kidding me? And also, and I was like shocked that they actually, in the time period when we're in that trial period, right? I was shocked at that play, that they were banging it and it was also amplified.
That was in the temporary facility, which is very close to your end of the facility.
It's, yeah, kinda, but it's down below and it's surrounded by trees, okay? Alright, so when it's up on that ridge, which, just to say, like, every single person I talk to is shocked by putting it up there. My wife and I walk up there all the time and we're thankful for having that ability to be on the property.
Which you will be able to get to.
I know and I'm appreciative of it, I'm aware of it, I'm aware of it. But I'm just saying that we go up there and it's kind of like, if it was, when the wind's blowing, you can, you'll, I don't, we don't, no one did a proper sound study. I'm just saying that straight up, I was not impressed. No one is at my house and I'm up higher, so I will hear everything. And there are other neighbors that hear as well. And again, a lot of them don't want to come to the board and say wah, 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 wah. I'll say one thing, okay? So, many things, sorry. When, so let's say they've, it's really noisy, okay? And you call the police, 911. So is the police office gonna come with decibel, decibelometer to measure the sound?
No, we have the ability to do that, the town of Phillips Town.
Oh yeah, so I'm gonna call at 10 o'clock at night or 9 o'clock at night and someone's gonna answer the phone and come with a decibelometer? I mean, I'm not being rude, I'm just saying, like, I'm questioning.
I'm gonna explain, but we can come out the next day and review what had happened and at the following event, if there is, if it exceeds the decibel level, it will be stopped.
And how will, and how will, okay, so how will someone, the next time it happens? And they only have a fine, right? Slap on the wrist, so what happens?
Well, and part of this that's not being discussed is they have a relationship with the community. And for 30 plus years, they operated at Basque Bell and I don't know of many complaints that we got at that facility.
Yeah, but I haven't heard that, I've heard other.
Well, I don't know who they complained to because I've been on this board since my 14th year.
I mean, I've, I'm not, it's, anyway, I don't want, let's not, I don't want to go back and forth and I don't want to take too much, I'm just, alright, look, I'm just, my concerns.
Wrap it up.
I get it, sorry, I told you. I know, my kids like are always like going like this with my, you know, dad, god. But, and my wife's probably watching. So here's a concern, a major concern is, and I think the town's left themselves way open and it's really not good, and Howard touched on it. So, so anyway, so I'm gonna say this, okay? So this document, right, the proposed law has for many structures, calls for many structures, including an open air theater, outdoor pavilion, production rehearsal facility, artist guest lodging, amongst other structures and for special events. All of these things that I've just mentioned have a common, one common denominator, the potential for noise, all of them. And so my concern is that they build, they were talking about building these minor structures, these little homes that are up like 1,000, up to 1,000 feet, three bedrooms, which don't seem very little.
They're all in the site plan, right?
I know, but some of them are in front of my place. And so an actor comes, or a couple of actors, they have, they're not, they're not adjoining, so they're not living in one building, they're maybe spread out in a similar area. And they come home and it's like 12 o'clock, they've had a great performance and there's a bar and all of a sudden they're talking really loud and I'm having to hear it.
One of your neighbors could do the same thing, but I understand your.
No, my neighbors don't do it and they don't, and also my neighbors, I would call them, I'm sorry, John, I'm just, buddy, I'm just, you know, pushing back. If I knew that Joe owned his house over there and I know him, because I know all my neighbors and we have relationships with all my neighbors, and if they were having a party, either we'd be invited, right? Or if we weren't or something and they're having it, I'd call them up or go over the next day and say, hey, this is not cool. When there are actors going in there and they're going in and out and they have no skin in the game and they don't pay taxes or anything like that, what's gonna keep, an actor? I mean, I'm sorry, I have friends that are actors, I know what they do.
Wild people.
Whatever, there is people, but they're partying. And so what happens, and I have to deal with that and it's 2:00 in the morning and I want to go to sleep and I can't go on the property and start yelling at them.
No, but you could call 911.
Oh really, like who? I mean, who am I gonna call?
You could call 911, I said it. If somebody's disturbing the peace, you call 911.
It's not my, no, I don't want to even have to call 911.
Okay, well, I can't.
That's what I'm saying is that, well.
Wrap it up because we're gonna end very soon.
Alright, so, so the thing is about these tiny minor structures, okay? Is that I know that it'll be going to planning, right, up to 1,000 feet. But once it's, it's in paragraph F number one, it states that any new minor structure will be considered, will not be considered a modification on the GCCPDD, correct? Okay, so these minor structures can have up to three bedrooms. Once the planning process is over, okay? So they've gone back to planning and they got their whole thing, okay? The developer will be free to put as many, up as many minor structures as they want, would want basically anywhere on the property because there's nothing restricting it, so that.
Well, it would still require building permits.
Yes, a building permit, but when you go to, Greg, Greg? So you go to Greg, right? And he's like, I want to put, here it is, I want the building permit for my thousand, under 1,000 foot structure. And he's like, okay, but it doesn't say where they're gonna put it, because planning's over and they can put it anywhere and they can put any number they want as long as they go to the building department, correct? And they get a.
That's not, it can't.
It's not in the, you're passing a law.
The idea is kiosks and minor types of accessory buildings, stands and things like that. It's not residential structures or anything.
That's not what it says.
Well, if you look at the definition of minor structures, it does mention exactly those uses. Kiosks and other small structures intended to facilitate uses permitted within the GCCPDD.
The actors and guest lodging are considered minor structures.
I don't think that's the case.
Up to 1,000 square feet, they're gonna be under 1,000 square feet.
They wouldn't fall within the definition of minor structures.
I'm saying to you what's black and white in print and you, I'm just bringing it up. You can look at it, I'm just saying, it's not, look, when someone comes to a meeting and they have a lawyer and they say, here it is in the contract or here it is in the law that you have made and it's not specifically in there and you say, well, we thought, they're gonna be like, it ain't in here. I'm just saying, so that is a, not a danger, you know, I'm not saying that they're gonna go crazy, but you're allowing it and it's permitting and what, alright, so here's another thing I'm just gonna.
This is gonna be the last one.
Okay.
This is it.
Okay, the special events. Alright, so my concern is that, again, it's all about noise and just interrupting my piece. And so what happens, special event becomes like concerts. And I've written about this before, about my concern that this grows bigger and that it becomes like a caromore because now a cultural, a cultural destination. And so, you know, not only for the special event, which has no measurement, again, of really, how are you gonna measure what the lighting is? And so let's say they have a special event one time, but this, and it's a concert. And what happens if like, it's at, you know, 11 o'clock at night and I'm like, I can't listen to that.
First of all, if they came for a special use permit and said the concert was gonna be at 11:00 PM, it's not gonna happen. So let, we've already, we beat the special permit, let's, let's.
I'll just, I'll just ask you, well, my concern is, and this is something I would like the board to think about, okay? And I'm only, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying.
My thinking's coming to a real end very soon.
I promise.
My thinking is really limited at this point.
I appreciate, listen, I appreciate all the time, I really do. I need, obviously I need it, had it bottled up.
I can tell.
So I know that the Shakespeare Festival has struggled and a lot of theaters in the United States have struggled, like the last year for sure. I know it, okay? If a lot of, there's more money going into streaming that we can, in this entire state or something, every, and people are into that. What happens? What happens? And this has to be asked. And this has to be asked. Shakespeare Fe- Festival, people aren't into Shakespeare, and they don't really want to go out, and it dies. And, you know, everything does.
Just like a golf course, right.
Just like a golf, exactly. What happens to that amazing, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen, I want you to succeed, you know? But what happens if? Again, my concern and my fear is that we are stuck with a big project, a beautiful development, and it becomes some noise-making, crowd-making thing, and that's what, if, is there anything that can be, you know, that can be put into this document somehow before you vote on it, Steve, that has some way of controlling what's ne, possibly what's next, and not have it just as an open book?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take one, one more person, and then we're gonna, we're gonna continue the public hearing to, uh, to the next, to the February meeting. All right, one, one, all right, we'll do two, five minutes, quick, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna be less than five minutes. I'm Libby Anderson, I live on Fox Hollow Lane in Garrison, been here for 17 years. Uh, I am not on the board, I am a donor to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare. I'm an active theater goer, my husband was on the board at one point. We consider Hudson Valley Shakespeare to be a prime reason we want to live here. It's a great cultural amenity for the town, we think. It makes it, it, it attracts people, um, it, it provides an artistic atmosphere that we want to participate in. And we hope that you approve this. I also think that, you know, Hudson Valley Shakespeare has been exhaustive in trying to address all the issues that have been raised over and over and over again for the last three years. And so, you know, I don't think that, that they need to be, you know, treated as if they had never talked about or addressed these issues, because they have. Anyway, I hope you approve.
Thank you, one more, go ahead. You, you spoke already. You could come back in February, I promise.
Um, and I just, you know, we have Katrina Schindeldecker, um, Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and we have provided letters of support for Shakespeare, um, to the planning board, so I don't think I need to reiterate that now, but we do look forward to them being a permanent neighbor on the property. But the petition in front of you really affects about, um, currently 57 acres that the Hudson Highlands Land Trust holds, potentially 75 acres, where it's removing the golf course use, the spa, and all of that from the property that we currently hold. Um, and while golf, many people here golf that property, is a valuable and wonderful sport. Um, it's not something that we currently have on the property. We have people walking, cross-country skiing, birdwatching, walking their dogs. And this will kind of codify that, you know, golf course use and the ancillary activities with that are no longer part of what we do on our property, but it'll be more recreation. So we are in support of the petition. Thank you.
So, um, I'm gonna suggest that we end, because we still have some business to do as well, so, very briefly. But, uh, I'm gonna suggest that we end the public hearing, but we'll keep it open until our February meeting, the February regular meeting. What is the date, Kelly, do we have the date?
February 1st. February 1st, October 4th.
Yes, February 1st.
February 1st, okay, so it'll be February 1st.
So we're continuing the public hearing on February 1st, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. What, yeah, we're gonna start at 7:00 PM, yep.
John, can we, um, I mean, after, I mean, just some things to get clarity on.
So we have a few items that we need to, uh, if everybody could kindly, if you're leaving, leave, have your conversation in the hall. We have some business to take care of.
What's up, we're, we're keeping the public hearing open?
No, I think we're just, I don't know.
No, we're leaving the public hearing.
We can take, get written comments, and then we pick it up on January, February 8th, February 1st.
Okay. Better, oh, yes, thank you. Okay, so item number three?
Number three, resolution enacting a local law-
Folks, folks, we're having a meeting here, if we can just kindly keep the conversation down, thank you. John, please, so we can talk.
A resolution enacting a local law to provide a real property tax exempt to volunteer firefighters-
Okay, I can't hear a thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
See you next time.
Can't wait. Can we try it again?
Sure. A resolution enacting a local law to provide a real property tax exempt to volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers, and this is a roll call vote.
So, uh, once again, Bobby and I have to exempt ourselves from this, please.
Whereas, the town board has before a proposed local law entitled, "A Local Law Amending the Town Code of the Town of Phillips Town by Repealing Article 6 Entitled 'Exemption for Qualified Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers of Chapter 156 Entitled Taxation, and Reenacting the Same as a New Article 6 Entitled 'Volunteer Firefighters and Volunteer Ambulance Workers Real Property Tax Exemption in Compliance with the 2022 Amendment to the New York State Real Property Tax Law 466A. And whereas, following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved as follows: One, that the town board does hereby adopt the above local law, and two, that the said local law shall be effective upon filing in the Office of the Secretary of State in Albany as required by law." Um, presented, Councilwoman Judith Farrell, as councilwoman on presenting the foregoing resolution, which is seconded by-
Second.
Jason Angel, Councilman Angel. The vote on the foregoing resolution was as follows. Megan Cotter, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Um, Jason Angel, Councilman, voting. And I, Judith Farrell, voting aye. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to all the firefighters and first responders, um, to the school districts that Megan Cotter and I met with and spoke to, and all of the, um, people who participated in making this a reality for our-
And now that the party's concluded, I would just like to say, I wanted to say this during the whole discussion. The emergency services in Phillips Town are at a critical point, and if we don't, and we do have a wonderful drive going on currently, um, if we don't continue to encourage people, we are going to be facing a huge problem by not having a volunteer service, and it would cost the town a fortune to do a paid service, so, I just had to get that out there. All right, I'm good.
John, I was wanting to say that.
Yeah, it was like, I was bottled up.
I know, I can see that.
A quicker bottled up.
Much quicker. Yeah, there's a wonderful drive going on right now, and it seems to be working, so, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is a resolution appointing Annette Flaherty as full-time clerk to the town justice as, um, at a salary not to exceed the amount set forth in the 2024 budget.
So we, uh, we had an opening for the justice clerk, um, and was advertised and interviewed. The, we do have a letter here recommending the hiring of Annette Flaherty, uh, which is counsel, I'm sorry, deputy supervisor Flaherty's wife, so Bobby will have to recuse himself from this whole process. Um, Annette is also a relative of mine, but for our counsel, I do not have to, um, I do not have to recuse myself because of the distance between her and I, so, um, Annette is very qualified, she did run the court years ago, and left here, and has been working as a justice clerk, um, in another town, so she's coming back, which is a relief for us, so. Can I get a motion to, um, a resolution to hire Annette Flaherty as the clerk to the town justices at a salary not to exceed the amount set forth in the 2024 budget?
Summon.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Welcome, Annette. Uh, the next one, we're gonna have to change this, because, uh, the number of hours and the hourly rate, it's going to be based on, um, the approved budget, so, it, it will be $22 per hour to a cap of the limit set in the town 2024 budget, so. Because if you do the math, that goes over.
Goes over the budget, right?
It goes over the budget, so it's-
So we got a reduced amount of hours per week.
Right, they're gonna have to figure it out, right, they'll have to figure it out. So, but it cannot, I think, I forget, it was 26,000, I didn't check the budget, but it's whatever's adopted in the 2024 budget. So can I get a motion to hire Nancy Yaremco, who was also endorsed by both of our justices, um, uh, interviewed as well, and is an experienced deputy court clerk currently, so, she also will be coming on. Can I get a motion to hire Nancy Yaremco as the clerk to the town justices?
Summon.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye, thank you. That's it, right? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, thank you all.